Hey. We'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a roll call. I'm Mark Doty, the vice chair, and I'll be running the meeting tonight because Mary's without a voice. This is Mary Lee Tomlinson, the chair of the planning board.
Robin Turk.
Jay Watt.
Tommy Skilley.
Richard Cormier. I'll pretend I'm not here.
Yeah.
Jeff Drew, code enforcement.
I am Melanie Weston, contract town clerk with Kennebec Valley Council of Governors.
Thanks, everyone. Welcome, folks. Next is minutes of April 8th.
April 8th and May 13th.
I'll do them one at a time.
Yeah.
All six minutes of April 8th as presented.
Want to weigh the reading?
Weigh the reading, yes.
That's a motion. We got a second. Mary's the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? Very good. Motion carries. Now for the May 13th minutes.
I'll make a motion and we weigh the minutes. We weigh the readings and you approve the minutes.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? I've got some if somebody else does. Go ahead, Don.
No, no, no. I was just going, yep.
You were jumping ahead, huh?
I was jumping ahead of him, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, I wasn't here, but...
I wasn't here.
Mary wasn't here. But my questions or our questions are on the site plan pre-application for Lakewood Garage. Was the stormwater plan and the site plan for Lakewood Garage received?
Yes.
And was the project approved before they were received, or was it contingent upon?
It was contingent upon.
And did you have a sketch or something to go on?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
They had to draw in the retaining area. We had the sketches.
Good. A second one was on the web shoreline zoning. Was the signature block added?
Yes.
And soil lords control sketch and letter received?
I have shoreline zone, uh, the soil survey for the entire town of Madison.
We have that.
You got that?
Yes. Jeff went off the bat for his, he said that he had the soil origin plan for all properties and that there weren't any adverse soils.
Okay, and this was a shoreline permanent application?
We looked at four of them, so I'm confused on which one.
Which one web was?
Which one web was.
Yeah, okay. You have questions?
So you looked at four, but there's only two in the...
We talked about, no, we talked about, we didn't move forward on...
There were tabled.
Tabled.
Tabled Rogers.
And another, oh, and the King guy.
Yeah.
He was discussed as well. A retaining wall over on the other side of the lake. He was tabled until next meeting. Chuck Carpenter was tabled until next meeting. And the guy over by the inn. What road is that?
Salmon Road.
Salmon Road.
Eleven Salmon.
Until the 14th.
Yep.
We only discussed, we only moved over one.
Okay.
But the others weren't on the agenda for that meeting?
There were two carpenters and carpenters.
And Rogers, and Rogers Rogers.
And Rogers came to us and we looked at them and told them what they would need to move forward. Right. We discussed them in other areas, other business.
Okay, that is...
And they're coming back on the 14th.
Okay, then those two should have been stated in here, or just as two more who come before the board, that there was no indication that they were discussed. Or what was needed.
Yeah, we were told just to come back when that's...
They didn't have what they, their materials were, I mean, we couldn't even... It was more of what do I need to come here with?
Okay, then that should be reflected in the minutes regarding those two.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor that we're here? Thank you, folks. Okay, old business ordinance, short-term rental campers, recreational vehicles. Melanie, want to, it's been like two months since we've thought about this. Do you want to bring this up to kind of speed on the thinking process?
Sure. So, short-term rentals, we discussed this briefly when you both were on vacation. I had, we had first reviewed this a few months ago, and it was pretty basic. I have it up on the board here, so I'll try to go through this a little slowly. Our first issue we'd had with this is pretty generic. We didn't really know the why we were doing this, so I kind of went through and added a little bit more into the purpose and clearly stating what the purpose was here. But at our last meeting, we really kind of discussed, is this pertinent to Madison? Does Madison want this? I think I was asked by the town manager to draft this mostly under concern for collecting revenue from any new laws that go into place about lodging taxation. However, after discussion with the rest of the board, I think there is a lot of concerns about how to implement this. If we have the infrastructure in place to actually regulate this, who is going to regulate this? Who is going to actually?
Enforce it.
Enforce. Do we have that kind of ability to do that? So, the board had discussed last time, just canning this, full idea. Which you have the ability to do. You can vote no.
They didn't want, the members that were here didn't want to take that responsibility on without the entire board here, so we tabled it till tonight.
Okay, good. And Mary was going to talk to the town manager to see what the goal was or what the need was?
Yeah, she said that the goal was safety, to ensure that wherever they were residing in short-term would be, could be impacted by the safety of the facility. So I had to keep track of the numbers that are short-term. And the request, I think, did come from her for this ordinance. Yeah.
Okay, done.
If the selectmen don't see any to move this forward, I don't see any for us to work on it.
So what's brought before the selectmen? It was not.
I thought you said the selectmen said...
No, Denise.
Denise. Didn't you just say that someone said that we didn't want to move it forward?
You guys did.
You did read it.
Oh.
I was speaking of you. I'm sorry. I was speaking of you all.
I'm sorry.
The board. When I say the board...
I misinterpreted, but yeah.
All right. Good. Yeah, we had quite a lengthy discussion. Cut some of my points. I didn't really feel like going any further with this was like canceled on a lake. We already have a code enforcement officer if there's any safety issues. Enforcing this is almost impossible, and people own those cabins, don't live in the state of Maine, but they need to rent them out to pay the taxes to keep them in the family. I just think we're stepping on people's toes on that and telling them what they can and can't do. The biggest thing is enforcement. I mean, I don't see any way that we can enforce this. And the only people that are going to complain are the people that have problems where they're renting. And then that goes to Jeff, and if it's a code violation, he can deal with that out, so.
Another big issue is the septic systems. A bed and breakfast, or an RMD, or whatever you want to call them, would need to redo their septic systems, make them larger.
So I was the one that brought it up that we should make, I was going to make a motion to not further this, to send it back or send it back to Denise and tell her that we didn't want to pursue it, but I didn't want to make that without you guys being here and having your input on it, so. If we want to discuss it, we'll find. If not, I won't make the motion that we tabled this for now until we either get further information or guidance.
Any other thoughts?
Just a question for Melanie. Have other communities developed these kinds of ordinance? Yes. I would say not so much in our region, kind of north of Skowhegan. I've seen this more commonly, gardener, for instance, has one. I'd say more in southern kind of region. Other ways to regulate short-term rentals would be, for instance, if we had zoning. You could regulate it that way. I'm thinking specifically of hollow well. Or within ADU language, so accessory dwelling units. If we had more language on that, we could discuss ways to say, hey, if you're doing an accessory dwelling unit and you were using it as a short-term rental, then the other primary dwelling has to be occupied by an owner. So that's another way to regulate it without having to fall onto someone to monitor how many there actually are.
Someone has a, like an RV section in their building code that I actually have to enforce. It's, you have them fill out a, an application, and basically it's to find out where their septic is going. And that's RVs, campers, things like that. With the short-term rentals, there's usually a septic system for that, so it's...
If we are concerned about that, I have drafted another ordinance. That would be for recreational vehicles and campers, to specifically talk about that issue of septic, but that would be another discussion.
Have we had any complaints in town on short-term?
No, 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 no apartment, because that's long, that's regular, but.
Short-term Airbnb style, have you dealt with anything in your ten years?
Nope. On the, I did receive a, an email. I think I sent it out to everybody. On the 4th of June, there's a short-term rental webinar from 2:30 to 3:30. And we could even set it up here if everybody would be interested, but...
But we're writing something that we literally have never had.
Exactly.
An issue.
Right.
Do we even know how many?
Short-term rentals?
That's part of what this would be, would be creating a registry of some kind, but again, without the infrastructure in place to be able to support that, it would be difficult.
Yeah, I just, I don't see how we can enforce.
Can't. I don't see it either. I don't see how you do it.
I think this also may be the mechanism to get in place before something happens. We seem to have been caught short recently in the last few years of things occurring that we've had no ordinance to enforce. And so therefore, going forward, having something like this would prevent issues. But I'm going to second the motion that we hold it, table it at least until after that one.
That's a second.
Yeah, I think that's a good motion.
I just think we need more information on where this is going to lead, and we need to know how to police it before we make an ordinance. I know it protects us, but we still have some guidance on how we're going to deal with it if we do this.
Right.
Because we could do it, and there's no way to police it, then we just wasted everybody's time.
A lot of communities that are able to police this successfully, I think, develop or use some sort of database system, some sort of software that allows you to really track it and have sort of data sets in order to really see the numbers and use permitting software so that everything's coming in electronically through a website, and I think that makes it a lot easier. Being that the town of Madison doesn't have anything like that set up infrastructure-wise, I'm not sure this would be the time to implement something like this.
More calls.
Well, a lot of these towns that have that kind of software also have a larger code enforcement department.
Right. And a full-time police department.
And a full-time police department.
You call, you call violation, yeah, and you call sheriff's department. You think they're going to come back you up on a code violation in a short-term rental? Probably not.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Can I see if the public wants to weigh in before we take the vote? Is there anybody here that's interested in weighing in on this matter? Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries.
So let me write this down. Jay, motion. Mary, second. To the table. More votes.
Is it June 4th?
June 4th, 2:30 to 3:30. I just looked on Airbnb in Madison, Maine, next Tuesday and Wednesday night, and there were two spots in Madison, Maine that you could Airbnb. Yep, all, both around the lake. So I mean, it's, we're talking, I think, a fairly miniscule number.
There were two spots available, or two spots total?
There was only two for that, so if someone else has already rented that night, their site might not pop up.
Yeah.
But I mean, there were two available. We're not talking 20. You know what I mean? Two in the town.
Okay, one second. Is that what he said? The webinar, one second.
For the 4th.
From 2:30 to 3:30.
He sent it.
And I sent it out and emailed to everybody. Whether Jay got it or not, I don't know.
I did get it.
Hey! Cool.
Thank you, folks. Next on the agenda is the mobile food vendor ordinance.
And just so you'll know, I invited a lot of vendors. I invited more vendors than actually came, but...
So just to give a brief update to Jay, you three, we're not at the select board meeting. This did go to the select board meeting. However, there was...
No, no, Jay and Mary and Mark.
Bobby was there.
You do.
So there was three.
At the select meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can't count. That's one of my, one of my skills. The select board decided to send this back to the planning board because there was quite a bit of questions. Lisa? Lisa had some very good questions. But after the first half hour, I think Al was tired, so he decided that there's too many questions for the select board to deal with for this to go to the town meeting. So wanted some more input from the public before, and from the planning board before this goes to town meeting. So that is why this is back in front of you all.
Okay. Did any of us have input?
Jay? Was there certain areas that were more, well, the topic of concern?
I think that it would be awesome of y'all to let Lisa bring up her questions and...
There was a plethora.
Yes.
What, three pages?
You only let me ask three.
She started. Actually, kind of agree.
If you want to come, we can go one at a time. I will watch them.
Y'all still want it a time?
Okay.
Do you like to come up? Do you want me to? No. I used to take a zero in high school if I had to do a speech, so this is not my thing. It needs to be said.
No, just relax.
I've seen you in action. You do well.
Yeah, you have, haven't you?
Would you give your name first, please?
My name is Lisa Wright. I live on the River Road in Madison. Do you want me to, because, do you want me to just start from the ones that I already asked? Okay. The first thing, we kind of determined an answer to this. I do want to say, though, the questions that I was asking to the board and the town manager, I did ask them, I don't know if any of you watched the meeting, but I asked them if they'd all read that. Crickets. I don't know if anybody did, but they brought it to the meeting to vote on. I'm not good with that either, so, here we go. I did ask, why would it be the intention of the town to regulate privately-held or hired mobile food vendors, say for like a family reunion or a party at my house for my family reunion or something? The wording in this, and this isn't me like going, it's just discussion. It's very vague, the way it's written. It doesn't really specify that we don't intend to infiltrate privately-hired people on private property. And I think you probably would be good to designate something in there. And the towns, the select people and the town manager did indicate that it was not their intention to do that and make somebody get a license for going to a private place. We did determine that. And is, are you in agreement with that? It's not your, the intention of the town to make a mobile vendor get a license to do a private function that isn't serving the public? Because it doesn't really say that.
So that's one thing that could be made clear in the ordinance?
Yes. I did read this many times in quiet, because it's worded so that it's like, oh my God. It's a lot of extra words that, for a small town, I don't really think, this is a lot. So, moving on? Okay. One of the other questions was, if the town specifically asked a mobile vendor to come and set up, say during Madison and Ensign Days, would it be the intention of the town to give an exemption to that vendor? If they said, hey, come set up, sell at Madison and Ensign Days, is that the intention to exempt that person because you specifically asked them to come? It doesn't really say anything. There's a section later on that I was going to ask about that says something about the select board being able to issue that license at their own discretion, even though people don't meet all the requirements. So it's like, bother with the requirements if you're just going to let them override it.
Yeah.
So... Thoughts?
I think those are all good questions that need to be considered and probably should have before.
Well, I have three more pages for you, so.
Mark, do we want to discuss, you're going to cut? We need to address like each of these so that the disordnance is either corrected or squashed. Because the, well, the point she just brought up, I mean, I have, so I have, this definition does not include vendors selling at stationary tables at fairs, farmers' markets, or community events. So, I don't know if this is something we want to discuss as we go through.
And that is where?
Do we want to just have it? That's in the red section on page two on the back. It's, this definition does not include. It's the first bullet point. She may not have.
Oh, I have the, I don't have the new version.
Do you have the, the copy?
Yeah, I got an answer.
Okay, I'll just look on this one. So this was added after that meeting? No, this was...
No, this was me, actually.
This was added, I think, after our last, planning board meeting will be discussed this. I can check this date. It was, this was our March 21st draft.
You lost.
Mark and Mary, I forget, I don't have any questions. We'll let them, just let them.
They're having their own private conversation.
What I'm suggesting is that if anyone has questions written down, to submit those to Jeff and have him, and then at a future meeting, at the next meeting, that we can, assuming that there's time on the agenda, that we can then look at those questions and make the necessary revisions in this ordinance to address some of those issues.
Without discussion? You just want them on paper, without discussion?
If your questions are clearly written, that would be an issue. I mean, I have no problem with you bringing them up, but I'm talking about for us to have a copy of those specific questions so that we can take them to our next meeting and work with those on the agenda. So I appreciate the time that you're here, and that's important, and the discussion is important, but I want to make sure we have a copy of your questions.
Before we go any further?
No, no, just make sure you get those to Jeff.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
So I think we can go ahead and discuss.
Yeah.
You want to just look through, or do you want to talk to each one?
But if we can address them as she goes through, and then maybe we'll make another meeting to think about these as well.
Okay, so I'll revert back to the first question.
Yep.
Can I, I know, Jack?
You can.
So I did, during our last meeting, with the first concern about private parties. So if you look where I highlighted up on the screen, under this definition does not include, I added a bullet point that said vendors who are operating at private events on private property. I think that could be a good exemption.
You did that just now.
I did that at the select board meeting.
At the select board meeting, okay.
I can't, I can't read my log.
Alan requested that. I couldn't, I didn't want to. That it was not our intent to make someone that was hosting a wedding reception at their house register a mobile vendor, which I don't believe that was ever our intent.
No.
So I did say.
Catering and...
Yeah, catering and a private function or funeral.
Do you think that would address?
The private function question?
I think that's pretty clear.
Probably, as long as you state it separately.
Yes, I think that's...
You could go, oh, does that apply to me based on the way it was written initially?
Yep, I agree. Yep, okay.
For the second question, sorry, this is going really quickly. I don't want to make it and be all sick. For the exemptions, don't throw up on me, no. I think the special events permits with the select board, we could maybe iron that out a little more. I understand what Lisa's saying.
Well... Madison Ensign Days, the Worcester House sits up in front of the crack there. They haven't had to get any special permit or anything. Are they different?
Is it Worcester House? Is that the one up behind Dick and Reagan?
Yeah.
They've been licensed.
Okay, just making sure, but I'm just...
They're licensed with the state, licensed with the town.
So they don't need a special license to be at an event?
No, they're already licensed.
Okay.
There's no ordinance as it sits right now, so they don't, right? Because they're licensed.
That's what I thought, but...
They're licensed.
Just want to make sure that I understand it correctly.
So, I know we're not really allowed to speak, but, so if you have a license with the state and a license with the town, why, why do you have to have special permission at Ensign Days? Madison Ensign Days.
You wouldn't, you're saying?
So this special event permit would be specifically for people who could not, who don't have a mobile vendor license, who could not meet the requirements to get a mobile vendor, like who, with the state or with the town? If they are not a mobile vendor, they just want to have a one-off.
Wouldn't they, wouldn't they have to still say, go to the town and say, hey, I'm licensed with the state and the town. I want to do Madison Ensign Days.
Her question, and all we need to address is, do we need, do they need this permit if invited by the town to a town function? I believe that was your question. I don't want to speak.
It is.
Okay.
So that's the question I would want to address in this conference, is if the town invites someone, and we can use, I don't know if there's a lot of events, but that are town sponsored, but Madison Ensign is one of those. If the town invited a vendor, that's not a vendor coming, that's we invited a vendor, they would not need this license per the exemption on special events permit, if I can read you that.
Then I'm confused.
But they would still have to be licensed with the state and town, correct?
Not under the special events permit.
I, the Boy Scouts opened up, I put a barbecue up on the side of the street from Madison Ensign Days and sell hot dogs and hamburgers.
The chili cook-off at the park. The chili cookoff at the, the park. You know, all the, uh, the, uh.
So who's liable if someone gets sick?
Going to get sick.
Being an insurance agent.
No, no, I'm just, I've just been through AG double hockey sticks trying to open a food truck and, I, I, like Lisa, I haven't been able to get correct answers, so. So my understanding of this question, in my interpretation, I think everyone has to have a state license and each, the town where you want to go to, you have to get a license to be able to vend in that town. So in this case, if the town is inviting, everyone has to have the license from the state no matter what. In this instance, we would only be talking about town license. And if you're being invited and you're already inspected by the state, I guess that's where the question comes in, how I'm interested in the answer as well. Because it seems like we're, we're creative, right?
I think that's up to you guys, if you want me to put an exemption in there, if the town invites specifically a vendor, we could put an exemption in there if they are specifically invited by the town to vend.
Okay, herein lies another problem.
Yeah.
Madison Ensign Day specifically. It's not that the town is inviting them. It's, it's, well, I mean, people sign up to be there, like with the carnival across the street from the craft fair. They contact whoever's running the carnival to set up their spot there. So it's not that the town is inviting them. Personally, with the craft fair, I invite personally the Worcester House. So it's not the town's inviting them, it's the people who are running these town sanctioned events.
Right.
But if you wanna get into wording issues. And so the question becomes is what's the intent of this ordinance?
Right.
And the intent of this ordinance is to regulate, as I was told, when we developed it, was to regulate a more permanent structured food truck. It was not to regulate the cheerleader squad wanting to sell popcorn at Madison Ensign Days, or the Boy Scouts wanting to sell hot dogs at Madison Ensign Days. But if you have a mobile business in your, and I use Stan's french fries as the example, as a friend of mine, he would need to be licensed by the town of Madison to come in here and sell french fries. Whether he does it every Friday or he does it for Madison Ensign Days. How, how do we get that language in here? I don't, I'm not an English major, but that's, that's the intent.
Mary's net.
Um, I suppose I wanted to mention it, I agree that was the intent for those businesses, those food trucks or vendors that were here in the town on a regular semi-regular basis, not just someone that comes in for these individual events, someone from out of town. You know, maybe somebody from Waterville's coming in for one day and like Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, whatever, that's the chili cookoff. Those aren't covered, this is for a business who is operating a food truck or has a semi-permanent site here in town where they're selling. And the goal was safety primarily.
So is there a definition that we could use to nail that?
I think so, I mean, look, for which specifically?
For what we're trying to regulate.
I think we have it in here, I mean, I think the mobile vendor itself is pretty clear, which is a self-contained, motorized or towable food service establishment. And then with the, this includes, and it does not include, again, vendors selling at stationary tables, individuals selling from personal vehicles, vendors who are operating at private events, which we just added, and non-motorized food carts. I think it's pretty clear, in my opinion, if people have suggestions on how to make it clearer, I'm all ears.
Melanie, scroll up please, I'm not sure if I have this in copy, you go up to the very beginning of applicability. Okay, the last paragraph, the ordinance does not apply to vendors selling from personal vehicles that are not permanently modified for soup food service. For example, somebody selling strawberries or fiddleheads or what have you. Vendors selling at tables at fairs, farmers markets, or the temporary community events authorized by the town of Madison. And I think that's very clear.
I do think the special events permit as well gives the town of Madison that leeway. There is vendors who do not specifically fit into this criteria if they want to be invited to events from the town. The select board does have that ability to grant permits for that specific event. But, again, we can, we can change this and add more leniency if we need to.
Does that answer your question, Lisa?
Yes, what about a, a vendor who does have a permanently modified trailer? This is Michelle.
Yeah.
From Smoking Good Times. And, um, that, this, that's who I was kind of asking for at the other meeting. So, they have a trailer that is, it's a full kitchen, you can cook the whole shebang in it. But here it says vehicles that are not permanently modified as mobile.
They are exempt.
That would not.
Personally, not be exempt.
Okay, that would be more answering my question. Okay. Waiting for more? Okay, uh, let's see, we also talked about the, the section 250 dash three regarding about committing a crime. If somebody committed a crime in the last five years and served more than a year in jail, they're disqualified from selling or getting this license. I don't disagree really, but can you just take a class of people and say, you're not eligible, even though you've committed your crime and did your time? Is that, what's the legality of that? And, and the same thing, I know that one of you that was at the East Madison meeting mentioned something, gave an example of a sex offender handing an ice cream to your four-year-old. I don't think anybody would want that, but if that's the intention, what would be the difference of saying if you are required to be registered on the main registry or any other state or the federal registry, you're just, you're excluded from this license? You have two classes of people that you're saying, I'm gonna take you and your qualities and tell you you can't get this license. And you over here, you can't get this license. I mean, this is just discussion, I don't disagree with it, but can you just do that?
Mark?
Mark?
I'm doing it earlier than I did the other night with Aaron. Uh, yes, you can. I own an insurance license, it's a fiduciary license. And if you are a felon, if you've had past crimes where you've taken money in, in a trustworthy way, then you'll never get an insurance license because we're fiduciary for people. So there are many professions. I would, I would say that banking as well, if you went in and you'd have an embezzlement on your, you were convicted of embezzlement, I don't think you're getting hired at Scotty and Savings Bank or any other bank for embezzlement. So yes, there are offenses, I mean, you cannot be a sex offender and go teach, you can't get a teacher's license.
Right, but a mobile vendor license.
There are many classifications in this world where your punishment, although maybe over within the court of a year, I mean, many felons can't possess firearm and go hunt never again, you can't get a hunting license.
Right.
It's as basic as you get.
Okay.
So yeah, I don't, I don't.
I mean, it doesn't apply to anything, it was just something that I kind of was like, really? So, it's just discussion at this point.
Yeah, so that would be.
It would seem like it would be discretion, but not apparently.
I mean, I would feel pretty confident in, in that particular section, I don't have a problem with that particular section. If you were convicted of a drug offense, I don't necessarily want you working a food truck at a social event like Madison Ensign Days. Yeah, I think we can defend that.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we also talked about on page three, letters H and I. I don't know if it's still in this, uh.
Yes, I think it is.
I was just curious if that was like submitting to a background check, but I think we determined that it's really gonna be more of answering questions to see if you qualify for this license. Have you guys developed a questionnaire for, to go along with this for these vendors?
We have developed an application, yes.
Yep.
And on some level, it's an honesty test, because I mean, we're not giving you a background check, so if someone says, if someone's a convicted felon and they don't put it on there, you're right, we're probably not gonna know. But should something happen, we're probably gonna have some coverage there because they didn't disclose it.
Okay. So if, uh, regarding letter K, is, um, if a vendor sets up for a weekend and then they go away for the week and they come back on the next weekend, is this requiring a permit every time you re-set up in the same place? Or do you have something in place for that, like a tiered, if we're gonna be only here all summer long, but not during the week, only on the weekends, is, is that gonna require somebody to get another permit every time they re-set up?
No, I think the purpose of K is mostly to make sure they're not setting up in like the shoreline zone or cemetery or something like that. And also I think to make sure, one thing the select board was really concerned about was making sure that they had, if they did not own the property that they were setting up on, that they had written permission from the owner of record. For instance, I know Blissful Brews is down at Cumbes and they were concerned they didn't have owner, like permission from the owner of Cumbes. So I think that's more what we're thinking of, I don't think Jeff is gonna be hounding people every time they.
Well, it's my understanding that a permit is yearly, like.
Yes, yeah.
Because you have a permit for any particular town.
Yep.
So each town you go to, you have to give them a permit, but not every time you go to town, okay?
No, it would be yearly, yep.
Okay, because there are things in here that would indicate that if you move, you have to get the code enforcement person to approve it in a different location, like if you've gone around the town.
Well, as far as what she was saying, like reasons for safety or to make sure you're supposed to be there, you could check in with them, right?
That's, the wording is a good point though, so I'll make sure to double read it and see if I can clear that up.
Dawn or anybody that would have an answer to this, going back to H and how can they fill out that questionnaire with disqualifying criminal conviction? If they were to hide something, obviously we know that they would falsify it, correct? Uh, what's the difficulties in doing a background check? Is, is there a cost to it or time or?
Both.
And is it significant, do we know that number?
So, there's B I G, which is Business Information Group, I run a background check on every person that applies for a job at my office. And you can specify what it is you're searching for, so criminal convictions, felony convictions, et cetera. Wanna say, don't fool me, give or take, the last one I did, I think, was seventy-five dollars. So, I mean, that's, that's significant if the application fee is thirty and we're doing seventy-five bucks on a background check.
Of course, I have one on my phone, I pay twenty bucks a year for.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah, and, yeah, I pulled up a lot of information there, uh, you know, because I do background checks on every tenant. So, and it pulls up a lot of stuff of where they lived and convictions, any felonies that are on there comes up.
Where is he? Pardon me?
What did he say?
I use Business Information Group, it's called BIG, B I G.
Yeah.
Uh, he has another source.
Yeah, it's just a map, it's, I think we've all seen it, it's kind of like the truth finder. Or, uh, uh, there's a bunch of them out there. And my wife has one that she checks every one of my tenants and it just brings up a bunch of stuff, any jail they've done or any time, any convictions they've had.
But they're not free.
No, it's like twenty, don't fool me on, I believe it's twenty bucks a year that she pays for. And, you know, to have somebody like just fill out a questionnaire and then we're gonna trust them, of course we would have to, right? Uh, but I think it is a simplicity to doing a background check and that's just my opinion.
Plus, who's, where's the cost come from? Who pays for that app for every time we do a background check?
It would have to come from the application fee.
So the application fee would have to increase. If it was twenty dollars a year.
The application fee is only ten dollars.
Comes out of Jeff's budget.
Yeah, probably.
I don't have a budget.
What should you?
I think that's a good, something Jeff could certainly implement, but that would have to be written in that we are doing, you have to notify someone that you're doing that.
I truly was just curious to know.
That would probably need to go through legal, I would think.
A release form with the application.
Yeah.
And would take weeks probably.
No, it takes hours.
Really?
You're gonna back leave that.
Oh, nice.
Good for the next one. Okay, um, in section two fifty-eight. Private property, it doesn't, again, with the, with the private stuff, like my house for example, it doesn't seem to differentiate between private property like the Cumberland Farms parking lot that isn't town-owned and my property that I own. Is there any kind of wording that could go in there like that? It's not the intention of this ordinance to regulate times, because this, this kind has to do with times, like at a private residence. It's saying that it can operate on private property from six AM to one AM. I mean, there are times when people party all night long and want that going. Is that exempt if it's on a private, like at a, at a residence as opposed to Cumberland Farms parking lot?
It is a pub, it's open to the public.
Okay.
That defines that.
Okay, members of the public being served.
This is for the public, with the, with the exemption of your private function.
Okay.
Meaning weddings or whatnot, that takes it away. Then, in my mind, it makes this a public, is this guy serving or gal serving food to the public? That's where the criteria is.
Okay.
That was the intent and the spirit of this.
Yep.
So, it says to one AM on a private property, is that what it's on?
If they're serving for the public, but they're gonna be subject to noise ordinances and all the others.
Well, that's what I'm saying, after one o'clock, I mean, yeah, I know pilot, people like to party all night long, but then your neighbor that doesn't like it is gonna call, so, I mean, is there an ordinance on noise and?
I, I think we're doing something that.
Right.
There's no one, I've never seen a food truck open at one AM in Madison.
I wish.
I mean, ever.
Streets were one to six.
I mean, I haven't seen a restaurant open past eight.
Roll down here, please.
Is it one AM restricted?
No, my license is, I'm licensed from eleven to eleven, thank you.
Okay. I do think too with the exemption we put in the beginning about on private property, like for private events, that this would not apply, but I can add another section in here referencing that exemption as well, again, because.
Right, because you have to make reference to that, to outside order. We can be here.
Yes.
Until whenever we want to, but we have to quiet, we have to clean, we have to, like.
Yep.
No, wasn't there something in here about, uh, setting up at a, like at Cumbes? The reason why they're set up at Cumbes is because Cumbes isn't open just yet. He's under construction and they had permission. But when he's, when, when they're back in operation, you wouldn't be able to set up there without his permission.
Yes. I think I need to make that more explicit though. Also, there is, we do have a separation requirement. So except when operating a special event, food trucks and food trailers shall not locate within one hundred feet measured by most direct line of occupied space of a food service that having a fixed location. I'm not sure if you read that. So essentially, that's a fixed restaurant. So for instance, once we have the Taylor's Drug Store reopened as a restaurant, once we have the restaurant opened on Cumbes, that pretty much eliminates that corner there as a location for food trucks. Except for special events. So that is something to consider, do we want to keep that in there?
I'd say yes, because again, that clarifies for special events, but if Cumbes decides, hey, you know, fine, go and have a food truck, they're giving them permission, so we already have that, that the owner gives them permission to operate. Am I reading that correctly, Melanie?
No.
No?
No. The purpose of this, the intent of this section, and we discussed this was, there's a fixed business in town. So say it's Subway right now, and say you wanna put your food truck in the Big Apple. Subway is a permanent structured restaurant in our town paying taxes with a storefront. And they deserve some protection, meaning a hundred feet. That, that was the logic, that was my logic, and I believe that was the board's logic, I don't wanna speak for anyone, but I believe that was the intent. I.e., if you set up across the street at. if you set up across the street at, um, the Abbey, just say you, you parked right there on the side of the street at the Abbey. But you have Fonzo's right across the street, and you're selling french fries and fried chicken. Well, Fonzo's is a taxpaying citizen of our town, and we need to afford those businesses at least a hundred-foot buffer before we bring in more people to fight over the limited customers they might have. That's the intent.
Excellent, yes, thank you.
And I did wanna clarify, there's absolutely a distinction for private functions. But it absolutely applies to residents. And I'll use, um, Mike that used to own, that used to work at the hardware store, he has a property at Eminem Ice Cream. Right across from the Hannaford's there, a few years back. If Mike said to stand fries, or to any of you that own trucks, come serve from my driveway, you can, you can put this right here. Well, for the public, not for private, that serve to the public. Now, he should be regulated, even if I'm a, if it's a private citizen's land, but you're allowing the public to come there and be served, like the woman did out at the hairdressing salon on two oh one with Andy Rose's wife. Shh, that's private land, but it was a public setting, they were coming in there to eat, like they do for the Worcester, uh, the one out back behind the digging rigging there. That, that's permanent, so that's, that needs to be regulated by the town, even though it's on private land, because it's for public consumption. So that's the differentiation between a private function on private land and a public service on private land. Is that clear?
That's good wording, actually.
That is really good wording. I'm gonna add that in, that's it.
Look at you.
I'm just gonna read my next question.
No, that's good.
I think we're ready for the next one.
I sure am, yes. With the hundred-feet thing, I'm, I'm just wondering, like, if, uh, I get that the taxpayer and the, the business that's already here should have some priority, but what if, like, a a Thai place comes in and they're, they wanna set up, say, in the little piece of parking lot at Irving across from Fonzo's, but it's Thai food? No-go, even though it's not even fried pizza, pizza and french fries?
How do you regulate that?
Yeah.
Therefore, we have to set a rule.
Well, they have to get a permit from you, and if they don't meet the.
What if they serve Thai with french fries? I mean, you know what I'm saying? How do you regulate what they're selling?
This is true.
That's why, it's just easier, give them a hundred-foot buffer, go from there.
I know, we hired Lisa to go around the office.
I have a job, thank you. Um, but, you know, if you're gonna have this, you may as well go through it thoroughly. Like you said, in the future, you know, you never know what's gonna happen in the future, cuz right now, there's, I've lived in Madison forever, I've seen, what, five or six different people floating through town and a few regulars. But you never know who's gonna come, that you might not want here. So, hmm, let's see. Some of these have already been addressed in, in answering other ones, so. Do you have anything in here about how far away people need to be from the rogue edge? Like, so that there's no traffic clutter?
We had talked.
Or blocking your right of way.
We had talked about adding it in, but we did not.
Jeff, I asked Jeff the O E numbers.
There's already ordinances regarding setbacks from the road.
Perhaps they should be referenced.
What's for, often it's not just food trucks or?
Right, but if somebody's looking at just this ordinance, they might not see that and know it.
What about the one down in the end of, was it Jones Street? That you, there's not a whole lot of space for people to park there.
I, I think I had it set up okay, there was a certain number, uh, so I had to have my truck a certain, a certain distance from the property line and a certain distance from the middle of the road. And the way I had it set up, I think I had enough room for four, five, six cars, depending on how they pull in, type thing. I was, I was expecting that was a part of the question.
If the board.
I did measure.
Yes, I was in compliance.
Well, I think that was a concern back when she first opened, too, that somebody brought here, was that they were worried that people were gonna be parking on the street and blocking food trucks.
I didn't get that far along before, I didn't get enough foot traffic to continue on long enough to get to that point, but it, that was a concern.
Do you remember where you got that information about how far is that back from the center line, or from Jeff?
From Jeff.
Just right? Do you remember where you got it?
Yeah, it's in our ordinances.
Which one?
One forty-five?
Don't ask me again, I've followed it for you three times.
I do think it'd be good to reference kind of setbacks, property line, parking.
Make a note of where you are.
One sixty-five.
One fifty-five.
One sixty-five.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay, so on page four, under letter D. Have, we talked about this out in East Madison, have any of the three people that were at that meeting? I know you have to run it by the board, but it, this says, you know, you can't park here, you can't park here, you can't park here, but we're supposed to be so business-friendly. Are we going to designate any kind of town-owned property where, say, three mobile vendors could park on a weekend and say, this is where you can be? Get the licenses and, you know, Jeff can go and make sure everybody's all good. And the town should really think about designating an area for people that wanna do that.
I actually kinda had that thought.
That was a part of my question, too. They tell us where we can't go, but no one tells us what we can.
In, in Waterville, they have a, uh, a vendor park. Is that what it's called?
Food truck.
Yeah.
Food truck park.
And the town has a parking lot right next to a playground that actually has electricity that, um, vendors could actually plug into, I don't know.
That's where I ended up going, and that's where I.
Main Street playground.
Waterville's very strict, right?
That's, I was gonna suggest that, that's an awesome.
That is, that would be a perfect vendor park. And there's no water there, and there is a porta potty there. Um, there is, um.
You're talking to the school parking lot?
It's not the school parking lot, it's town-owned parking lot.
But they have an agreement with the schools.
But they have, right, but she's saying on, on weekends, there's no school on weekends. Um, and that's where they also have the, uh, farmer's market, when they had a farmer's market. And would be an excellent location.
They do the trunk and treat there, right?
They do the trunk and treat, and they did the, uh, chili cook-off, uh, there is, and, or the, was it chili this year, it was, uh.
Dynamite?
Dynamite cook-off, but, yeah, I think they're gonna.
They have line reins, there's electricity down here, too.
There's electricity, there's lighting, yep.
The selectmen will need to make that decision, but I do think that's a great idea.
We can make it part of the ordinance, but the select break in.
Right, the closest food restaurant, uh, would be, um, Dunkin' Donuts.
It is something we can put into the comprehensive plan for policies and strategies, so I'll make a note.
I will, yeah. I travel to Pensacola frequently, Florida, and they actually, the county, the city of Pensacola bought six old Airstreams. They gutted them, they put kitchens in them, and they built like a whole barn with a roof. And they're all under there, and they regulate like what each one serves, so they're not stalking on each other. And it's an awesome area to go into, they have like, and there's one with a bar and music, and it is just a cool, cool place to go and. And anyone, you know, you got six different restaurants there, so everyone can get what they want, come back to a table.
Takes on a lot of work.
Yeah, it's awesome.
I don't know if I'd wanna do it right in town, though, like, maybe. Well, I get that, but, I mean.
The only place everyone has to go air their crew all the time. That was my problem, I wasn't public enough, people weren't just driving by and able to stop.
But like with your, like, you was hanging out with Pensacola, that's a great idea, but if you have, want that right down, it would be a great in town.
And, and we're not as big as Pensacola, you know, but.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying.
There is a green space there, there's parking there, there's.
But there's no running water, though, right?
No, Foco has a.
They've got one in Farmingtons, on the way to the hospital, they've got a barbecue, actually, with all Airstreams and stuff on the side. And I don't think they've got water there either.
No.
No, and it's got a sign that's designated as food trucks and and I don't think it's got water there. Yeah, I think so.
Yep.
Yeah, excellent.
Um, on page four, there's two letter Bs, but it's the second one.
Oh, thank you, you're right.
The, well, there's different, it's under the Roman numeral two.
Gotcha, okay.
B. The food trucker, the food truck or food trailer owner is responsible for verifying that a specific location does not violate an ordinance of the town. But on page three, letter K, that says that the code enforcement officer has to sign off on the permit. So why would, why would that be the responsibility of the food truck owner? To make sure that they aren't violating any ordinances if the code enforcement officer has to sign off on it before the permit can be issued.
Lisa, what was the first one that you're talking about?
Uh, page four, letter B, the, the second lowercase b, down about halfway.
Mary, if you look on the screen, it's that one. And what was your other one, that you, you said there's two?
Yeah, the, in letter B, it's kind of indicating that the, the food truck owner is responsible for verifying that a specific specific location does not violate an ordinance of the town. But back on page three, under letter K, that says the code enforcement officer has to sign off on the permit. So the vendor shouldn't really have to worry about this after they're being permitted. Like, why would they be responsible for, have a responsibility for knowing about what's violating an ordinance when it's on the code enforcement officer just saying, yep, you're okay here?
But in reading letter B, it says, in addition to complying with the town's ordinance related to mobile vendors and these regulations, the owner of, and operator of the food truck or food trailer is responsible for applying for and obtaining all the necessary licenses for his food service and beverages. This is talking about the state laws. It's saying, in addition to complying with the town's ordinance, we're not asking him to verify that his or her space is legal. We're saying, in addition to that, they need to also bear in mind the rules that Jeff doesn't know, or may not know, and those are the state laws that apply to those particular businesses. It doesn't say that they're responsible for overseeing where Jeff put them.
Well, it's, it's further down in that paragraph, it, it says, um.
In compliance with the vehicle laws of the state of Maine, securing state of Maine mobile vendor license and food truck or food trailer owner is responsible for verifying that specifics locations don't violate an ordinance of the town. You should, of the state and of the town. It's, in my interpretation of that, it's K applies to Jeff, this applies to working within the state laws that food trucks work under.
Okay, I didn't read it that way, and I guess if it's over to interpretation, it should be more specific.
It should be clearer. I think this location does not violate any ordinance, I wouldn't say of the, oh, any, any law. Not ordinance. Because it's covering state law, local law.
Could also be interpreted as other ordinances such as the noises and, and keeping up the attraction, things like that.
Okay, I just kind of took it as that, the responsibility for making sure nothing was being violated was on the owner of the food trailer, which is how it's kind of worded.
Well, it is, um, the responsibility of the food owner to make sure that you're complying with all the laws and ordinance.
Of the town.
Including.
And the state.
And the state.
Town, state.
County, whatever, whoever puts them in.
So isn't that on the code enforcement officer to do that? I mean, mobile vendors aren't really typically gonna be well-versed on town ordinances.
That's the responsibility.
They wanna own a business.
Duly noted. Okay, um.
What she's trying to say is like, anybody could just pull up with a, with a trailer and just start selling hot dogs.
Well, no, I mean, if they're permitted, then they're assuming you're okay.
Well, okay. You shouldn't be, you shouldn't know when you're starting a business like that if you're okay, cuz somebody calls up and says, I don't think that guy's, he's gonna come down there and say, where's your state credentials, where's your town permit, where's your, where's this, where's that? I mean, you should already know this when you're going into business anyway.
Yep, and I brought my tape measure, too, didn't I?
You sure did. I held it in a bit, so I was pretty sure I was in total compliance.
And from a protection standpoint, it truly is protecting, like, I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't catch your name.
My name's Ruth.
It's protecting Ruth. That, these laws are protecting the person that is abiding by this with a food truck, and there's a ton of them, that makes it difficult to not allow the people that aren't doing all of these to operate, because they're taking clients from Ruth. And she's complied. That's the mission of this, is not to let every single person in town pop out a trailer.
Right.
Because that would hurt Ruth, who's trying to follow the rules the right way. So, that's that one, but go ahead for the next one if you want.
On page five, section two fifty dash ten. Um, it's kind of, okay, there's red, let me look at it, um. Is there anything in here, or could you put anything in here, or is somebody going to be shut down if the code enforcement officer just says, you're in violation, we're shutting you down right now?
Yep.
Or is there any kind of something, if somebody's trying to do their due diligence and correct a violation that they truly weren't aware of, or, you know, is there anything like a warning system, I guess?
Nope, I'm going through that right now.
I would, uh, if I saw something that didn't meet state's guidelines, I would notify the, um, the, uh, was it D H H S or the, yeah, the D H H S, and their, uh.
Health inspector.
Health inspector, cuz I'm the health officer, I'm not a health inspector, so I, I can't shut somebody down just because they.
You can't, but there, there are people who can.
Who can, yes.
I think this also, just to be clear, too, this is after notice of hearing with the select board. So they would have a notice, they would have a hearing with the select board where the select board would determine that the licensee has violated a condition, and then Jeff, so that's how it's written.
Right, they don't immediately cancel your license, they shut you down until you are within compliance.
Yes.
And it is immediate.
It's immediate. It's how, it's immediate.
You're done.
I was lucky, I, I was lucky, he let me finish some of the food that I had already cooked. Cuz he didn't have to do that either, he could've made me leave.
So, section two fifty twelve. Um, with the select board having the authority to issue permits to mobile vendors who don't meet requirements in this proposed ordinance. Is that a good thing? I mean, what's the point of having the ordinance if you've got people that are complying and then the select board has the ability to just say, well, you're all set? Or whoever is gonna be issuing these permits, whatever the process will be.
But that depends on who you're giving to, you're giving them to a drink truck.
I was the chairman of the board, a selectman, and the chairman of the planning board in Skowhegan. And this section would apply on Moonlight Madness. We had those three days in Skowhegan when they do Moonlight Madness every year. And particularly on the Children's Night, there's one Children's Night. And the chamber would bring in ten to twelve vendors cooking hot dogs, cooking whatever they. they could do, the Lions Club and the Rotary thing, that all happens during. When they get such an influx of people, and, and Stan was a very good friend of mine, I insured for years in his food truck, but Stan would go down there, Stan couldn't handle the volume. So at a certain point in time, the town anticipating the crowd, and I'm not suggesting that Madison Madison Days gets there, but if it did, when you need to provide enough food service to a large event coming into town for a day, there are times when you lessen the restrictions to get enough food service to provide for a crowd. And Moonlight Madness is the perfect example in the town of Madison, I mean, of Skowhegan. They did that, they do that annually, and yes, they provide people that may not be in a food, uh, there was one person that set up like a wooden horseshoe, and they had food service going out of that, kind of like a Steve's Lemonade thing in the fair, but it was food. They didn't meet any definition of a food service truck, but they were able to go in there and do that, and provide food.
But in that instance, the, the requirements wouldn't be as strict to the game of.
Right. But it's for that particular singular event.
The Masonic Lodge did, is something like that as well. They have a kitchen, but they just brought it out so people wouldn't have to go in and.
So that's why it has value. Is it, is it, does it have value to the town of Madison? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know how big the events will get, but.
Could we add words that say in specific instances, or check a few times to see what instances.
And we have to think of the future too, not just now.
And they have to go before the board of select to get permission. I mean, that just doesn't happen. The selectmen have to say, "I think we're gonna have a need here, and this is how we're gonna solve that need." This ordinance says they have to go before the board.
Kind of wish he would use that one though.
I, I don't disagree, I mean, it doesn't get that big, but it gives them an out, it gives them a way to manage a large crowd situation.
Special events.
A special event.
It's not day-to-day operations.
It does say town-approved community events, so that.
I'm sorry, I, I'm having trouble hearing your.
It does say town-approved community events.
Probably will never happen.
But. The future.
Well, if you're opening up your world to this type of environment, this may happen.
And also note that it does say, "May include conditions to ensure compliance with health and safety regulations," so.
It should. Not may, it should. Will?
Anybody selling food chippy and compliance of some type of health and safety regulation, you know?
Is there another?
Things at the shelves.
Section two fifty eleven, the last part. What does that mean by, "Event organizers may establish additional, additional permitting requirements"? Regarding what? Like, if, if somebody goes in there and wants to set up and then an event organizer says, is there any time constraints where they have to let people know? Like, what, what is the intention there?
Well, in Moonlight Madness, you have to pay the Chamber of Commerce, that's not the town.
So if somebody wants to come in and, like, two days before the event, and, and then someone says, "Oh, at the last minute, well, you need to do this, this and this," but they can't. Do, do they have to be given a notice, I mean, by the event organizer, whoever that may be?
If an event organizer wants to charge on, in addition to the town as a fundraiser, say the high school provides ten food trucks in, they may charge each food truck two other bucks for the senior class to raise money for that event. That's, that, that's the event organizer saying there's an additional permit to operate.
That wasn't disclosed in the beginning?
We can't regulate, that's the event, that's not, we're not organizing every event, we're just putting a rule together that says, "If they do that, we can't stop them."
Yeah, it's just kind of, you know, not really cool to do to somebody if, we're gonna go in and then say, "Oh, you need to do this."
Well, we're not the event.
Or pay this, no, but it's in your ordinance.
That they have the right to charge if they choose, but we can't regulate what they do.
But it doesn't just say charge, it says, "Establish additional permitting requirements," not necessarily just a fee, when you already have all these permitting requirements. So is it, is it implying that the event organizers may make more permitting requirements in addition to the ones that are already here? So what does that mean, I guess? What is your intention by writing that there?
I think it means that the event of Madison High School has an event and they're inviting these other food trucks in, that there may be additional requirements that they have to meet there at the high school in order to provide the food. They can't just park anywhere, for example.
Right.
Or they might have to.
I'd say from an insurance perspective, if I, and I know this for a fact, if, if you insure a high school and you're gonna invite five food trucks in, they very well may say, "A food truck cannot come on this lot without a fire, fire suppression system." We don't care, as this ordinance, but their insurance company might, and they want that regulated. And so that school may or may not have to say, "Oh, by the way, your food truck has to have a fire suppression system." That would be an additional thing that may or may not be required by that event, not by us.
It is the event.
So this is just a, "Oh, by the way, you might wanna be aware of this" kind of thing?
Yeah.
They would know that ahead of time.
They would know that ahead of time, so they're gonna say, "These are, these are the criteria to come in here, you need X, Y, and Z."
Okay.
But we can't limit them to say, "You can't do that."
No, that's what I was wondering, and they're just, didn't, event organizers, it's just a little bit, the way I read it, I'm like, huh, what does that mean? So, okay. Um, yeah, I think that's it.
Those are some good questions, Lisa.
Do you have any, being the vendor?
You answered, you, you got them all.
Okay, that was my, my assignment. Do you guys have guidance from the select board and the town manager as to exactly what they are looking to do here? Because this seems overreaching, five pages from Madison. Were they very specific? I mean, I printed off Portland's and it's, it's long because they give you pictures of where you can and can't set up, but it, it's pretty much, a lot of it is verbatim, taken right from the Portland ordinance and put in this one. And it seems a little bit overreaching, it, it just, I think it could be simplified a bit, maybe, you know?
But you had all these questions for what we have, so.
Yeah, it's, it's. I'm gonna read it and, and not, if I, I wanna understand it, if they're gonna bring it to a board meeting and vote on it without even reading it. Somebody got it, I guess, I don't know, I guess that's me. Somebody's gonna do it.
We did have a public hearing on this before it went to the.
Yeah, well, I have a full-time job and I don't follow that stuff. I happened to see it at a meeting, at a select board meeting, it was just sitting there and I'm like, what the heck is this? So, I, I'm gonna address it when I can, I guess.
Ruth, I'd be interested in hearing your opinion, or Mary, do you own a food truck?
No, I'm, I give her.
Um, so, as a person that operates a professional food truck, meaning you licensed with the state, you've licensed with different towns, is this profoundly off from what you may or may not be dealing with in Waterville? Or in, I don't know where else you're in.
No.
Waterville was super strict, I'm shut down at the moment because I need my suppression, my food exhaust canceled.
It's very expensive, I understand. But, the intent is to provide professional, the people who invest in a professional wagon, truck, whatever you wanna call it, trailer, and you folks have a lot of money invested in that. It is to limit someone who doesn't match your level of investment to come in here and sell over the top of you.
Yep.
So, I hear what you're saying by making something less restrictive? But is that really what we wanna do for the people that make the full investment and come in and dedicate themselves, just like we tried with the hundred-foot thing to protect the landowner that has a restaurant? I equally wanna protect the food truck vendor that truly has made the effort to meet these criteria so that the next person can't come in closer than a hundred feet and take their customers away. So, I think this is due diligence, I agree that there were some ambiguities, I don't disagree with what you're saying. And the, and the, and the biggest one was us not excluding a wedding per se, or a private event. But if you separate out private and public, I think this is legit document with that fixed.
Absolutely, and not as strict as some other places.
For the protection, not just the owner, I mean, but for the rest of the town too.
Yeah, for the whole town.
People, other, other businesses make investments like Fonzos or Subway or whatever, so why would you want a food truck, just go cock out in front of that? You know, it doesn't, there's no, no logic in it. You know what I mean? There's no, there's, you gotta have some type of protections, and the state is gonna be probably a lot more stricter than town might be.
It was easier to get statements than it was to get one. So, my problem wasn't what exists, my problem was the information is not readily available. People are not very forthcoming with this information, Jeff didn't know, a lot of the questions I had, Jeff didn't, we didn't really have interest to know, because these things weren't really.
We haven't the ordinance.
Hopefully, we, hopefully, and I, I appreciate all your questions, hopefully, we've helped clarify the intent, the spirit. And additionally, to all the things that we write, we're not the enforcement arm of this, he is, but he, or anyone sitting in that chair, also needs to deal with our folks in town and the businesses within the spirit of how we're writing these, and they do that most of the time. Can't be a hundred percent, but they certainly try to represent.
People do check and complain, I had a person.
Yeah, so, that, I, I, I commend Jeff for how he does it, and, and I think, I do think there were questions, legit questions that you had that were not answered. Hundred percent. But I, I do think this discussion has helped. I was at the select board meeting and it was tenuous at best, um, and I do think this, this session of clarity, I think the next time we go back, I think we'll have more consensus in that, and we needed that, so, thank you.
It'll be good to see the completed, flowing version.
And we will have a, a public hearing after the, the board approves of what comes out of this, and so you'll be welcomed back again.
The problem is it's not gonna get on.
It won't be.
It will not be in this meeting, it could be a year before this. If there's not a special town meeting, this will not be implemented this summer and be implemented next town meeting.
Yep.
So we're talking a year away now. The reason we're trying to get it through, and I appreciate the ambiguities, but it's, this is a year out unless there's a special selectmen's meeting, a special town meeting, not a selectman's meeting.
And it'll go, after we have our, the meeting to rewrite this, it'll go to a public hearing for the planning board, then it'll go to the, the select board, and they'll have a public hearing as well, like they did and send it back to us.
So there won't be sufficient.
So it's a process.
And is there a way that us food vendor people could get together and request such a thing?
I'm sorry, what is your question?
We can't hear you up here.
Would there be a way for us, the people, to request such a thing if that's the case? Or do we just have to wait for it to flow out?
Oh, I'll notify you. I'll, I'll definitely notify you.
Did you mean for a special town meeting?
Right, if there's a, a way that we could get it pushed forward.
Oh, 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 oh. So there's a cost for special town meetings?
I think there probably have to be something else on that agenda, like another ordinance. Yeah, there'd have to be another ordinance that they'd wanna push through on the special town meeting, um, or we'd have to have the comprehensive plan finished, something else along with it.
Selectman vacancy, or they have to fill it, something like that would cause them to do that.
So we know. Thank you very much for humoring me and the question. Thank you for all your. Clarity is good.
Thank you for the questions, because that was the problem, where again, the answer is, how do we find this out? Who do we go to?
Did you have any other questions?
Not really, because my problem, again, was just that I know where to, how to put all the pieces together, what are all the pieces, and how do I put them together was my problem, in the box.
Okay, thanks everybody for your input, I think that was an excellent discussion, and I think the ordinance will be better for that. Move on next to new business, which is, there is none. So we'll next go to any other business to come before the board.
Jeff?
Do you have any other business?
No.
Can I bring up something?
Yes.
Is it possible for us, before we have public hearings or such, to get drafts of these ordinances on the website? Are they being put on the website?
That would be up to Denise, I believe.
Okay, is that something we could bring up to her for the select board? Because I think it would improve drastically community input if people could see drafts of these ordinances as we're working on them. Um, just so people can preview them and look at them, and maybe, if they're seeing there's a public hearing, but they're not seeing the draft of the ordinance, they're not able to review it and say, "Hey, I need to go have my voice heard on this," I think that'd be really important.
Does channel eleven do public hearing announcements too?
I think we let the town do it.
But I mean, like, is, I don't have channel eleven anymore because I have satellite TV, but if you have channel eleven, is there like, a slide used to pop up, like, say, in selectmen's meeting on Tuesday at five thirty? Is there a thing saying, "This public hearing, or this public hearing at this meeting?"
Yeah, I don't know, that would be a question for John.
That might be a good place to help notify the public that these events are coming.
Could be.
On social media, which everybody hates, so, I mean.
Well, John, he's always posting.
Yeah, I try to post them myself.
I do think it's important though that maybe, and this might be something I try to take up as part of planner duties, is announcing public hearings specifically ahead of time on social media, just to give people more, especially when we're talking about ordinance public hearings, I think it really is important. Because to Lisa's point, she didn't, she wasn't aware of the planning board public hearing until she saw it on the select board. And that's past the time where we need the feedback to be able to draft the ordinance, so if that's something that I need to do as part of my planning duties, I will.
So you can, do you do that for other towns as well?
No.
No.
She's a Madison resident.
Yeah, she's a Madison resident, but there's really dancing now.
Special helper.
Wants to come from the town office.
Yeah, I'll talk to Denise about it, as well as the website, but I do, I think it's important, I think we're seeing an issue with people not hearing about public hearings, so.
Excellent idea.
Okay, thanks. For number concerns.
Nope.
How are Randy?
I was just curious, when are you guys gonna get back to the comprehensive plan?
We, no, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure it got members.
We've been focusing on ordinances because those took priority.
But it, it has not been forgotten. Okay, board member concerned, Rick? Don?
No, sir.
Jeff?
I'm good.
Robin?
Kind of disorder. Kind of disorder. Where are we, Jeff, on Simple Twist? One second, let me write those down.
Where are we on what?
Simple Twist. That's right, you guys haven't been around.
Out of that.
They, uh, Jeff was, they hadn't had a license from. All right, I'm ready, I've got everything on that. So, Simple Twist Cannabis Company is out on two oh one, it's the old stove shop, kayak shop. They had been operating without a license because their license, state license expired from the OCP on July ninth of last year, and we didn't get wind of it until the end of March of this year. So, I, I served them a cease and desist the eighteenth of April, then I went on vacation and, uh, he came to Daniel's, uh, Sep- Sephany, something like that, uh, came to the town office and talked with Denise, and she told him that, uh, well, my cease and desist gave him till the thirty days to rectify his, uh, lack of licensing, and Denise gave him till the thirtieth of May, so she extended the cease and desist a couple weeks. And so on the thirtieth of May, if he hasn't produced his license from the state OCP, then he will be shut down.
Have we heard any thing either way?
I got, from what I understand, the, uh, all the information was sent to the state. I got, from what I understand, the, all the information was sent to the state and waiting for the state to respond, reply, issue, or deny.
You want to go on?
So the problem with this and the discussion at the selectmen's hearing was, and the frustration from the three planning board people that were there, Richard being one of them...
Thank you for representing us.
Is, we spent hours in this room, hours trying to do good, not trying to harm people and trying to set up a standard of operation. And then the town voted on a standard of three shops, the five existing, two going out, leaving the third. We had a commitment until the 30th of May, because our official gave it till the 30th. If this person relicenses between, he's not licensed now and it's after the 18th, so if he relicenses in the next three days, this store can stay open when in fact, I think we're setting a pres, a bad precedent...
Correct.
That may not allow us to do this on the next one. And so whether we're discussing food truck ordinances or marijuana store, whatever you want to call them, store ordinances, or this little rental, short-term rental ordinance, if we're not going to enforce them, they're not worth the paper they're written on. And I know that we're all busy, we're wasting our time here.
Why, we have plenty of work.
And that's exactly what I asked. That's frustrating. So we have peril in this particular case because it's going to set a precedent. Even, what scares me is Jeff just said his licensing stuff is in, if the state issues a license, we're stuck having five still. A, it's not fair to the four that have followed the rules and had a license for the last 10 months, 11 months. And B, it's not fair to the people that do this work to try to do what the townspeople wanted, like they voted on it at a town meeting.
Did you bring that up to the select board?
It was brought up rather vociferously, yes. Sorry. We appreciate, we appreciate what you do.
Yeah.
And we're sorry. And I, and I, and I respect that. And I'm actually, they were going to shut it at the 18th and say, "If you haven't done it by the 18th, I said you can't." Because you've legally, a representative of the town has legally committed us until the 30th. So this guy's got a mixed, non-consistent message. We can't, we had to go to the 30th because that was what the town stated. But it puts us in an arduous position at best. It just, and part of our job, and maybe it should come from you because you're our leader, is this communication, and you didn't do anything wrong in this instance, but this communication needs to be open within the town of, especially, I mean, you don't issue a lot of cease and desist orders.
No, that was my first.
All right, everyone needs to kind of know, like the fire chief, the police chief, maybe an email, the town manager, this is what I've done, this is the term. We're part committed, don't go past X because, and it's your first one, I'm not, I'm not faulting you.
No, it even went to the sheriff.
How do we implement this in the future that we don't get an additional commitment from the town? And it's not on Denise, I mean, it's a calamity of situations, right? A lack of communication, I'm not blaming anyone.
No, it's, it's the state, OCP, dropped the ball when they didn't tell us back in July.
Right, but we dropped the ball because we knew we had 30 days from April 18th, and we extended it to March 30th.
You should have, the cease and desist should have been close the doors, lock the doors.
And fix your problem.
At 30th. And then if you have everything, all your ducks in a row by...
You can reopen.
You can reopen. But, right?
Right, you should have been allowed to continue operating.
Correct, it was overreach by the town manager, first of all, I'll say it. I, I, I feel it's overreach because we have an ordinance in place. Why is she allowed to go ahead and just say, "Well, we're still going to let you do..." It does, it sets a bad precedent for the town, and for all of us that worked hard on that ordinance, I was one of them. She has to be shut down because she didn't have fire suppression.
And I didn't go asking for some treatment.
I mean, right, you don't get no, you're done. We're saying it's okay if you, if you're this person, or this person, or this business, it's not. It should be cut and dry. He wouldn't did his job, it was overruled.
I respect a lot of what you're saying, and I'm not refuting what you're saying, but I'm also not going to blast anyone out of the...
I'm not blasting, I'm just saying it was still overreach.
Right, but hold on, so it's literally his first cease and desist, and Denise being a new town manager, I promise you it was probably her first cease and desist. And so it's a calamity of errors and not really all communicating together and understanding, so...
But the wording was there.
I understand, but it doesn't mean that everyone interprets it the same. So I'm going to give her the benefit of the doubt because I think she's doing a good job in a lot of areas.
And it did go to the town lawyer as well.
Yeah, so the town lawyer advised something different. So in that regard, there's fault that can be blamed everywhere. It's how do we handle it in the future?
Right.
And are what we, is, is what we're doing of value to the town, or are we wasting time? And I think the town understands, the select fathers and women know now that, you know...
It's how do we fix it now?
It's how do we fix it in the future? And that's, 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 we need to solve the problem, not, I, I hear you, but we need to go forward and solve the problem for the future.
But it's going to create problems.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's a big mix-up. My only problem with this is 30th comes, 30th goes, next, whatever Monday is, the third or the fourth, he gets filing permission from the state. I've seen this too many times, there are too many circumstances, he goes in front of the selectmen and they don't want to put their foot down and make a judgment call very few times. They always give him, well, he's tried, he's done his best, and we've already set the precedence of extending, so why is it not...
The select board wanted to shut him down.
Well...
They did, but they changed their tune.
Which I understand, but when it comes back, it's happened time and time again, to make them hard decisions that everybody voted on and we worked our butts off on, they won't back it up.
That's what I knew at that meeting if it comes. And if you need us to be there, we'll be there, but that's...
No, you'll be there.
You'll be there.
Yep, good comments. Anything else, Robin?
No, my...
Well done.
I'll shut my mouth now.
I have no concerns. So we'll adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank y'all for coming.